To order, a meeting of the Village Board on Monday, October 5th at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is President's Report. Not too much to report tonight. I have had some inquiries via email or phone calls in regards to what the village is going to be doing for the Halloween celebration. In the past, the village has never supported or sponsored any of the Halloween celebrations that happen. It's more of a neighborhood event. On our website, you can find information of what our suggestions are for the Halloween event following CDC guidelines and from the State Health Department, which is strongly suggesting against it, but we are not out there openly or actively telling our residents you cannot celebrate Halloween. We're really leaving it up to the individual and how you choose to have that celebration or have your kids participate in that celebration. So that's really up to you. Once again, it is not a village event that's been sponsored by the village or supported by the village in the past. It's really more of an individual type of a celebration or activity that neighborhoods have been involved in. Trustee Zabel.
We have set hours though for Halloween, correct?
We have, as it has in the past, usually 5:30 to 7:30 on actual date of Halloween. And that's more of an announcement so that everybody is aware that they're, in case, you know, there are children out on the street in your neighborhood, that you are aware of what time they would be out there and be more present of them in the street and drive as such to prevent any accidents. That's all I have for President's Report. Next item would be announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports. We do have three things listed, but we'll go in order and start with the first item of Village President, Village Board Members, Village Administrator, Attorney, Village Clerk, Department Heads, and also Committee Chairs, starting with Trustee Zabel.
General Government Finance will meet on the 19th at 6:00 PM in this room and rely on the fact, as you just said, that I also point out today that the Chamber is going to have the Christmas party on November 14th. So they are looking for things, if anybody's interested. The Chamber does plan on doing the Christmas celebration on the 14th of November.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee Miller.
Public Safety met tonight at 6 o'clock and our next meeting will be on Monday, November 2nd at 6:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Trustee Kaminski.
Public Works will meet in this room at 6:00 PM tomorrow night.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? All right, seeing that there is nothing else, we'll go on to our next item, which is B, and we have a presentation of accommodations from the Police Chief for Officer Gregory Duckert and Lieutenant Daniel McCulloch. Chief.
Thank you, President Walter. Tonight, I wanted to acknowledge the performance of two members of our department. These accommodations were prepared by Chief Hale back in December of 2019. They stem back to a drug unit investigation that started back in March of 2018. The accommodations will explain that investigation in more detail. Both accommodations are worded the same. I'll read one for both members. So I would ask Lieutenant Dan McCulloch and Officer Gregory Duckert to step forward, please. Whereas the Washington County Sheriff's Office manages a drug task force, which includes detectives and investigators from Germantown Police Department, Washington County Sheriff's Office, West Bend and Kiwaskin Police Departments, the primary mission of the task force is to gather intelligence and investigate major drug crimes in Washington County by focusing on those who deal dangerous drugs within our community. And whereas Task Force Investigator Dan McCulloch received information in March of 2018 about a potential village of Germantown, man that was dealing drugs, over the next 20 months, detectives and investigators relentlessly pursued and gathered intelligence utilizing multiple investigative techniques without knowing the full scale of the illegal operation. Investigator Duckert has specifically assisted the task force by gathering valuable long-term intelligence to secure court orders. And whereas on November 12th, the investigation culminated with the arrest of the suspect and the execution of multiple search warrants, including at the suspect's condominium, a stored unit and safety deposit boxes at two banks. And whereas drug seizures included 3.8 kilograms of powder cocaine, 128 grams of crack cocaine, 16 hydrocodone pills, and 384 grams of marijuana. Assets in excess of $300,000, including cash, bank accounts, gold, silver, and a vehicle were seized. Detective Rank continues to work diligently with the United States Drug Enforcement Administration to ensure the suspect will not profit and retain assets from his illicit operation. And whereas the seizure immobilized the largest cocaine distribution operation into Washington County dating back to at least 1970. This arrest also sent a highly public message that criminals will be held accountable for bringing drugs into our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Germantown is a safer place due to the diligence and commitment of the Washington County Drug Task Force. Therefore be it further resolved that Daniel McCulloch and Gregory Duckert are hereby commended for the professionalism and dedication to the safety of Village of Germantown citizens dated this 5th of December, 2019.
Congratulations to your department and congratulations to the two officers on a job well done protecting the residents and being actively involved in the drug presence in Germantown. Thank you so much. Next item that we have under announcements is we have an election update from our Village Clerk.
Hi. There will be a presidential election on November 3rd. Presently, there have been over 5,100 absentee ballots that have been mailed out, and currently there are just over 14,300 registered voters in the village. In-person absentee voting will begin at the Village Hall on October 20th. The in-person voting schedule is on the village website, the cable channel, and under news flashes on the website. So it's there if someone would like to see that, and they can also call the Village Clerk's office and we're happy to let them know what that schedule is. I would like to see voters register to vote prior to Election Day. Of course, they can register on Election Day, but for the lines, it would make sense to register early. And we are here to help people through that process, where they can go online to myvote.wi.gov. We're happy to help the residents register to vote prior to Election Day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Village Clerk. Takes care of all items under the agenda of Item 5. We'll go on to citizen import and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing before I ask if there's anyone in the audience or connected via WebEx that wants to be participating in this. I do have a letter that we had received today, October 5th, from a local resident, and I'll read it for the record. "To ever this concerns, Gale Foods has brought up, bought up most of the houses and buildings on Main Street. The Board wanted it to be like downtown Cedarburg. What a joke, the parking on Main Street is a hazard. And Oakwood Village went to every meeting to stop Saxonie Village, and what a waste of time that was. We found out later that it was approved years ago, and the village made Germantown residents look like fools. We who live here are left with a noisy place to live. Dogs are peeing and pooping halfway up our grass, some pick it up and some don't. The road, they said would be about five cars a day, is much more of a racetrack. Three years of construction trucks and dump trucks, semis with roof trusses and other building supplies. The road is awful and the road is a racetrack in our once-quiet neighborhood, and the police cars go there all the time. I will never go to a Village Town meeting again, it is such a joke. We need a speed bump, but it will never get done because the village would have to pay for it, and we are not important." And this comes from Janet Olson, and I do not have an address or a street. I'm sorry. Janet Olson lives on Hilbert Lane in Germantown. So that is a letter that we received from that resident today. Is there anyone else that's in either the audience or on WebEx that would like to come forward for citizen import or public appearance? If there is, I would ask that they would come to the podium or make theirself known via WebEx so they can be heard. Is there anyone in the audience nor on WebEx?
I do not see anyone, no.
All right. Then we can go on to the next item on the agenda. I do have a question for the Village Attorney. We do list a public hearing in regards to the discontinuance of a portion of the 66-foot road dedication, but when I look at the actual language, it talks about people can be afforded the opportunity during citizen import or public appearance. Is it a public hearing in the sense of what a normal public hearing is, or are we only affording people who wish to come forward during that time?
No, it is a public hearing.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear in case that there was someone that were wishing to speak. If that's what was going to be the way we were going to handle it, then they would have that opportunity now. But now that that's clear, we can go on to the next item, which is consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda from Item A through Item E.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda, Item A through E. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call, vote please.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is our public hearing. We have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. Public hearing, Item A, discontinuance of a portion of the 66-foot public road dedication showed on CSM Number 4408 located at West 190 North 11701 Moldmakers Way and West 190 North 11708 Moldmakers Way adjacent to and between properties owned by Moldmakers Leasing and Investments LLP. To give us some more information and background on our public hearing listed on tonight's agenda, I'll turn the meeting over to our Community Development Director, Jeff Retzoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was discussed with the Village Board back on August 26th, Moldmaker Leasing and Investment LLP owns four parcels on Moldmakers Way. There are all of the owners abutting Moldmakers Way. They are seeking approval of a certified survey map to combine all four of those parcels into one 24-acre parcel, and in so doing, is also requesting that the village vacate the right-of-way for Moldmakers Way. Back in August, on August 26th, the Village Board did pass Resolution Number 53-2020 introducing the request to vacate the right-of-way, and the public hearing has been published, notices sent to all of the abutting property owners. Again, Moldmaker Leasing and Investment LLP comprise all of the owners. And back of last Plan Commission meeting, the PC did recommend approval of Resolution 57-2020, which is the final resolution before the Village Board tonight for final action that would effectively vacate the right-of-way for Moldmakers Way. The Plan Commission did at the same time also conditionally approve site development and building plans for a building expansion, 121,000 square foot building expansion to an existing 166,000 square foot building for MGS Manufacturing, with conditions that those plan approvals are subject to the Village Board approving the right-of-way vacation and also the certified survey map that you'll be acting on later this evening. Thank you.
This public hearing, I hereby stating, on Monday, October 5th, 2020 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, the Village Board and the Village of Germantown, I'm sorry, the Village Board of the Village of Germantown will address a proposed resolution discontinuing a 66-foot public right-of-way reservation shown on Certified Survey Map Number 4408. The requested discontinuance is requested by MGS Manufacturing and Moldmakers Leasing and Investments LLP. The area to be vacated is located adjacent to and between properties owned by Moldmakers Leasing and Investment LLP with buildings occupied by MGS Manufacturing located at West 190 North 11701 Moldmakers Way and at West 190 North 11708 Moldmakers Way. At the Village Board meeting, all persons will be afforded an opportunity to be heard in regards to discontinuing the right-of-way. Written comments may be delivered to the Village Clerk at the Germantown Village Hall located on McQuan Road in Germantown on or before the Village Board meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward to speak for or against the proposed resolution vacating the right-of-way along Moldmakers Way? Anyone wishing to come forward to speak for or against? One last time, is there anyone wishing to come forward to speak for or against the proposed resolution vacating the right-of-way on Moldmakers Way? All right, then this public hearing is now closed. It takes care of all public hearings listed on tonight's agenda, which then takes us to new business, starting with new business, Item A, Resolution 57-2020, a discontinuance of a portion of the 66-foot public road dedication shown on Certified Survey Map Number 4408 located at West 190 North 11701 Moldmakers Way and West 190 North 11708 Moldmakers Way adjacent to and between properties owned by Moldmakers Leasing and Investments LLP and a certified survey map lot combination and street right-of-way vacation request.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to approve. Trustee Zabel.
Yeah, my only question is, I'm assuming that Moldmakers originally requested the roadway to be put in there, because it was never part of original village, street or suite system?
Looking back at the historical documents, it appears that yes, Moldmakers Leasing did have a role in requesting that the road be constructed originally, initially.
So the original assumption was they were probably going to sell out the land and develop it, and different people coming in, but in reality, it's all them?
Correct.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion to approve? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is Item B, conditional use permit for Christopher M. Voss, property owner located at West 168 North 12340 Century Lane for Horticultural Services. To give us more information and background on this new business, Item B, I'll turn the meeting over to our Associate Planner, Emily Zant.
Thank you. Christopher Voss, agent and owner of A New Leaf Tree Service and the property owner of the property on Century Lane, is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to operate horticultural service business on the 16.2 acre property located on Century Lane. The subject property is located on the east side of Century Lane, just south of the Lover's Lane, Century Lane intersection. The site is zoned A2 agricultural. There's a mixture of open space residential and residential uses surrounding the property. This property contains a single-family dwelling, detached garage, and a 75 by 150-foot pole barn, which is intended to be used for the storage of A New Leaf Tree Services Company vehicles. A New Leaf Tree Services is an off-site tree removal service primarily serving Washington, Waukesha, Milwaukee, and Ozaki Counties. A New Leaf Tree Services currently has a total of eight employees. Employees will arrive to the site at approximately 8:00 AM, Monday, I'm sorry, 7:00 AM, Monday through Friday, park their personal vehicles, and take company vehicles to job sites. Employees will return to the site by 7:00 PM to drop off the work vehicles and pick up their personal vehicles. All company vehicles will be stored inside the 75-foot by 150-foot pole barn, and company vehicles include two bucket trucks, two chopper trucks, three pickup trucks, two stump grinders, two chippers, one dump trailer, and two mini loaders with trailers. The applicant estimates that this equipment will take up about half of the space in the building, so he's ensuring that there's plenty of space for indoor storage of the vehicles. There is no site or building improvements planned for the property at this time. There will be no retail or wholesale of mulch or other landscaping products from the subject property, and a condition has been added prohibiting onsite retail or wholesale from the site in the future. One of the concerns staff brought up at the Plan Commission level was about outdoor storage, and the original location for the proposed outdoor storage was to the east of the pole barn, which is highlighted with a star on the aerial image there. But that was visible from the property to the south, so staff recommended screening through the planting of evergreen trees on the east side of the pole barn. Discussion with the Plan Commission resulted in moving the storage to the north side of the building, which is now highlighted in orange on the aerial image. But we've still included a landscape plan for screening as a condition of approval prior to recording of the CUP in the event that the storage of material does begin to migrate to the east of the pole building. That would just be a plan that would be required prior to recording of the CUP, and then in the event that the storage does move to the east, that would be when the landscaping would be required to be installed. Okay, the applicant has indicated that mulching and grinding of tree material will take place semi-annually. Plan Commission recommends including a condition of approval limiting grinding and shredding equipment to two occurrences per year for a maximum duration of five consecutive days each time, limited to Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The recommended condition also requires that if grinding or mulching will take place for more than three, three or more consecutive or cumulative hours per day, a minimum of three-day written notice to property owners within 500 feet of the subject property indicating the proposed times and days of grinding and shredding would be required. The operator is encouraged to communicate with surrounding residents on a regular basis regarding any activities that will be conducted on site that will create excess noise or Staff also shared concern about the existing shared driveway easement. The proposed use will bring additional traffic of large vehicles onto the driveway, which is shared with the property to the south. And that was not likely anticipated when the original driveway agreement was drafted and recorded. So staff just recommends the property owner work with, the property owner to the south to modify that agreement and future maintenance of the shared driveway to their approval. Looking at traffic, to reduce traffic to the north end of Century Lane and Lover's Lane, where bulk of the residential properties are located, the Plan Commission does recommend requiring all business-related traffic to travel to and from the south only. This is consistent with the farm and nursery to the south that has voluntarily agreed to route all business traffic to the south following the completion of the Century and Lover's Lane reconstruction project. Okay, and so the Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit for Christopher Voss and A New Leaf Tree Services to allow the operation of a horticultural services business at the 16.2 acre property located at W. 168 and 12340 Century Lane, subject to nine conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions on those that you have.
Board, are there any questions?
I'll make.
Thank you, Emily.
I have a question.
Trustee Wing.
So reading over the public hearing, it appears some neighbors showed up, and mostly their concern was noise.
Correct.
So we have conditions in there to mitigate the noise. If the operation goes forward and either they're not following the rules or the noises way over what it should be according to local noise ordinances, then the neighbors want to know, then what?
Sure.
What are, what are things that we can do to protect the neighbors after the operation has already begun?
Sure. So the conditions prohibit any, I guess, growth of the operation beyond what has been presented here. In the case that we do receive comments or complaints from the neighbors that something is not in line with these conditions, we would ask that the applicant bring the CUP back to the Plan Commission, back to the Village Board for an amendment.
So there's no sunset on any of this? There's no trial period?
There's not, currently, no.
Okay. And I understand you're saying, you know, the operation is limited to its growth, but let's be honest, we all know how this works. His business takes off, he starts doing well, and he comes forward and wants to change the CUP, and nobody wants to limit a business that's growing quickly, and then we just, oh, okay, we'll let you have five more employees, we'll let you do, you know, a couple more days out of the year's chipping. And this is how the neighborhood slowly starts the incrementalism where it's no longer a neighborhood. That is my, my fear here, so I'm wondering, what can we do to make sure that doesn't occur? How can you protect the neighbors? Does anybody have any suggestions besides what we did? Because we can always go back and change a conditional use permit for the business, but it never changes for the neighbor.
If I could jump in, Jeff Retzoff, for the record. Condition number eight is sort of a standard condition that we include with all conditional use permits that effectively gives the village the right to call the property owner, business operator, in to review the conditional use permit, the original terms, the original application, and all of the various conditions. And it would be through Condition Eight where we would discuss possibly revising the conditional use permit, adding additional conditions, or possibly leading to revocation of the permit if we can't mutually agree on the terms that are needed to address the concerns. Initially, staff would respond with, you know, code violation notice indicating you violated the terms of your conditional use permit, and explore with them ways to address the concerns that are raised. If, if things aren't satisfied, satisfied, either to the village's satisfaction or the neighbors, then we could proceed with pursuing that Condition Number Eight and invoking that and bringing them back to the Village Board for review of their conditional use permit. I mean, that's the ideal sequencing of how to address those particular concerns. It is interesting, you know, we talked about a neighborhood, it's, it's on the edge. It's, it's, you know, an agriculturally-zoned property, surrounded by agriculturally-zoned property on one side and a scattering of larger lot residential, pre-existing residential along Lover's Lane in the north part of Century. So there are other users and uses in the neighborhood that, you know, can generate impacts and have historically, thus the requirement or volunteer situation with the, with the other business landscaping operation, the nursery, to route their traffic to the south and only to the south to avoid...
I, I know the area and for the reasons... I, I know the area, and for the reasons you cited is the reasons why I'm not opposed to this. I, I just want to make it clear, um, to board members, because this comes up so, so many times, with so many issues where we do a conditional use permit and that's it, and we make the neighbors' promises. This is the restrictions to protect you, and years go by and a little gets added. Oh, this is it, this is, this is final, then years go by and a little added, and pretty soon, um, they're not sleeping, pretty soon. They can't enjoy their backyard, pretty soon, um, they've lost control of their neighborhood, and I believe we should put neighborhoods first. Considering the other activity that's going on in this neighborhood, I'm not going to deny this, it's just an opportunity for me to ask what happens to protect the neighbors if, um, this ends up being a disaster for them.
Right, and I, you know, frankly, I think discussing it as we are this evening with the property owner and the applicant here in the audience, I think they'll walk away knowing that this is a serious matter, and they need to, to follow the terms of the permit as they've been issued going forward.
Any changes or enhancements to the conditional use permit as it's currently stated would require additional public...
Right.
Now, plan commission meetings, public works, not public works, but, uh, village board meetings, and also public hearing, correct?
Yes, we would, if, if we took the permit back to the board for review, we would follow our standard CUP review procedures and, and hold a public hearing. You know, whether it's at the plan commission level or the village board level, I guess we can decide at that point, uh, but we would hold a public hearing.
So in case this business does, uh, advance and it requires additional days for chipping or additional employees or additional truck storage or additional storage of materials, that needs to be brought forward and, and considered, is it a major change to this conditional use where it requires that, or is it something that still falls within the use as it's been stated?
No, we would evaluate that. I mean, we've, we've held in, through the conditions in the, in the permit to what the applicant has proposed as a condition of approval, so if they were to, you know, significantly or deviate from that, um, we would evaluate that as to whether or not it's a significant change, um, such that it needs to come back for, for review.
Right, and any and all complaints that would have been received in regards to this business or its operation would also be put into that consideration?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use for Christopher Ross as presented.
Motion made, and seconded, discussion. Trustee Zabel.
I just want to point out to the people that are doing it, that everybody assumes that the neighborhood is not going to change much. If indeed we do expand the village highway garage, we will be required to bring sewer and water to that area. If that occurs, the density of that area could change quite a bit, the noise levels and stuff that could occur, and the complaints that could arise could increase. So you need to...
Right.
...make them aware that this is what's here, but if the neighborhood changes in the future, because it's a possibility that if we expand the public works building as part of that expansion, we have to bring sewer and water into that area.
Further discussion? I don't know if I want to go there yet. Further discussion? No, further discussion, uh, to, to, in regards to trustee Zabel, um, it is possible that sewer and water could be brought up to the public works building if it so choose, if we so choose to enhance that, that area. Um, possibility of neighborhood sprouting additionally to that, I think the sewer and water would be coming up from Freistadt, not from behind on one forty-five, so I would think it would take additional expansion or extension to get it up behind into Century Lane area a little bit, um, but that, that's a big, that's a maybe to me, um, and right now, uh, we're still considering the possibility of the public works building as a whole, and it's not a given, it's still a proposal.
That is true, but again, as part of the sewer runoff and as part of the agreement we have with DNR is to make sure that sewer and water, and that, that building does have sewer and water. So you're getting close, and it would come up through Division Road, because it would come up Freistadt and then up Division, so it is a possibility.
The footprint stays as the footprint is. I mean, things could change dramatically where it, it could be built closer to Freistadt Road as a possibility, if we want to talk about possibilities. Further discussion? There's no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ross, for coming. Next item under new business is item C, certified survey map, lot combination for Chaz Hastings' agent for WI Piggy LLC, property owner of Jerry's Old Town Inn and Von Rothenberg Beer Stube located at North one-one-six, West one-five-eight-four-one and North one-one-six, West one-five-eight-six-three on Main Street. To give us some more background and information on new business, item C, I'll turn the meeting over to the community development director, Jeff Retzloff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the proposed CSM is quite simple, it's simply to combine, uh, two parcels into one. Um, as, uh, we have discussed with, uh, Mr. Hastings, uh, going back to the beginning part of the year, um, as a prerequisite to his, uh, proposal to permanently expand the outdoor beer garden on the Beer Stube property, um, and encroach across, into the, uh, the Old Town Inn property, we, we needed the two parcels to be combined to effectively eliminate that common property line, and that's what this CSM does. Um, this is one of these two prerequisites for, uh, that permanent beer garden, uh, expansion to, to occur. Uh, the second would be to create, uh, a planned development district for the entire property to address setbacks and, and parking requirements and, and other affected, uh, issues, um, that are in our standard zoning regulations, uh, for the B-three district that these two properties are located within. Uh, so, this CSM again is simply to combine the two parcels into one.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion to approve the combination of the two properties into one certified survey map? Trustee Zabel.
Did anybody ever answer Dave's question about the possibility of a roadway or an easement that was on the east side of this, that they were done, that Jerry was under to use for developing that bat property? Are we aware of that? I see a fifteen-foot easement that only goes so far back off of Main Street, but I don't...
There's two roadway, uh, dedications there, one that comes up the, the driveway between the two buildings of the Beer Stube and Jerry's Old Town, and then there was also, I think it was more of a, a property, I don't think, was it a right-of-way?
Yeah, I included a graphic to the PowerPoint, um, in addition to what we presented at the plan commission level, that shows the, uh, the outline of the five-acre-plus part, uh, property that, uh, Jerry Grossnick owns, it's highlighted in red, uh, and as you can see, there's a, there's a, an narrow strip that, uh, fronts on Main Street east of the parking lot of the Old Town Inn. Um, that, I believe, is the quote-unquote easement that, uh, was being discussed at the plan commission level. It was thought that that was an easement, when in fact it's, it's a, a piece of property that is part of the five-acre piece that fronts on Main Street.
I was getting confused, I see your, the easement document, or the document itself has a fifteen-foot easement document.
That easement is, if you go back where the yellow line is, go back to the other picture, there, you see it right next to the building, but it, right there next to the building is the fifteen-foot easement.
No, there's one here, a fifteen, this is a ten.
That small fifteen-foot easement, um, it's been recorded already, I believe it's, it's, has something to do with sanitary sewer improvement.
The second's in the road.
No, it's on the Old Town property.
Okay.
I wonder if that's where the old well used to be?
There is, there is an, an old well, um, that, that might be the easement. It has something to do with the utilities, um, we're, we're researching that, we're, we're hoping to have some information in the village server for tonight's meeting, but, uh, unfortunately, we don't have that. But that's a separate easement that, that really hasn't come into play with regard to, uh, the combination and removing the, uh, common property line between the two places.
So that, that panhandle that goes up there feeds back into Jerry's property, so there's no documents that actually ties to this property?
Yes. There was a time when... This five-acre piece was, was divided into long parcels, much like you see to the west, and in fact, it was a small, a very small parcel associated with that existing shed that lies just south of the parking lot, that had a ten-foot-wide access easement to it. That's what's on the CSM and what Jerry Grossnick would like to, to retain for access purposes. However, uh, he has better access by way of the...
Panhandle.
The panhandle, if you will, to Main Street and/or if, if something could be reached with a common access easement through the parking lot. I'm sure we'll be discussing and exploring that, uh, as we move forward.
The other question I have, there's no storm sewer that goes through your property that's all south of your property, right, and Jerry's property?
I don't believe there's any storm sewer.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, it's, it's on the five-acre piece, yes.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hastings, for coming to the meeting. Last item under new business is item D, resolution fifty-eight dash twenty-twenty, agreement with Aylers Inc. to analyze the feasibility and alternatives to use tax increment financing to fund improvements necessary for proposed developments south of Holy Hill Road. To, uh, give us a little bit of background and information on this, I'll turn the meeting over to our village administrator, Steve Kreckel.
Uh, thank you. Um, over the past several months, uh, other staff and I have been having, uh, ongoing conversations with, uh, representatives from, uh, Capstone Quadrangle, a, a developer in the Milwaukee area, um, who, uh, actually Mike Faber, uh, from Capstone Quadrangle is here, uh, tonight, um, they have, uh, done several developments in the area, including, um, the, recently the, uh, Amazon development, uh, in Oak Creek. Um, they have been, uh, they have under contract to purchase, uh, some property that is, um, uh, south of Holy Hill Road, uh, across from where the, uh, Briggs and Stratton building is, uh, and have presented, uh, proposals to staff, uh, for, uh, some, uh, light industrial manufacturing, shipping and warehousing type of development in that area. Um, they're, at this point are, uh, only done very, uh, rough and preliminary review of potential site plans, uh, and they're still, uh, fairly flexible with those as they're working to, um, to identify specific users, um, and, uh, and a layout for that property. However, they are looking at, uh, potentially, uh, three buildings totaling over seven-hundred-thousand square feet of space. Um, as we've been having these conversations, uh, they also have indicated that, uh, they do not believe the development can go forward without, um, assistance, uh, from the village for some of the, uh, infrastructure and site preparation, uh, expenses. Um, and we have talked about what that potentially could look like, um, and it would be, uh, based on initial review, a candidate for tax increment financing. Um, there are, uh, a number of different alternatives that the village could pursue to look at, uh, tax increment financing, uh, either, uh, amendments to the, uh, the cer, the current boundaries for tax increment District Seven, or tax increment District Eight, or potentially the creation of a, of a new tax increment district. There also are potentially, uh, several, uh, some advantages, some, some benefits that the village could obtain, uh, by going forward with this development in terms of, um, uh, providing additional cash flow to either tax increment District Seven or tax increment District Eight, uh, or using the, uh, the additional, uh, increment that would result from this project, uh, for other infrastructure improvements in the area. In order to provide more information to the village board and to the residents, uh, to determine if this is something that the village would like to move forward with, I think at this point, it would be appropriate to bring our financial advisor, um, Aylers, on board to, um, provide some additional analysis of these alternatives, both in terms of their feasibility and, and, and benefits to the village. Um, I asked Aylers to provide me with, uh, a proposal, similar to work that they've done in the past for the village. It would be, uh, a three-phase proposal, uh, for a total of, uh, fifteen thousand five-hundred dollars. Um, I think the initial phase to determine whether or not this is feasible and, and something the village board would like to move forward with, would, would cost six-thousand dollars. Um, in the event that, uh, uh, that we do form a tax increment district, these expenses would be paid for, uh, from, from the tax increment district. Um, if, if we do not move forward, we would likely, uh, utilize just some of the, the general fund balance, uh, to pay for the, the expense of the contract. Um, I believe I've, I've covered all of the, the, uh, the key points related to this at this point, I could answer any questions that you might have. Uh, Mr. Faber is here, if you have any questions or would like, uh, additional information regarding, uh, Capstone Quadrangle.
Board, questions? Trustee Ball.
What public improvements did we do north of Holy Hill Road that we used tip money for?
Um, basically, all of the, uh, well, all of the public improvements directly across from here, uh, the construction of Gateway Crossing, um, as well as the sewer and water, uh, were, uh, in, included in the, uh, were financed through the, uh, tax increment District Eight.
So, the road and the utilities under the road?
Correct.
Just that one road? So everybody else brought everything? We brought the sewer and water down Holy Hill Road and ran it up Gateway Crossing?
We, um, we also did fund through the tax increment district revenues, uh, the sewer, water, and road improvements, uh, related to dielectric. Um, the rationale and the reason that one was conducted is it went through that property, property and, and made the connection, uh, to where the illings, uh, development, um, i- is constructed, illings. Uh, for that portion of it, they did pay their own expenses for sewer and water, uh, and, and road construction.
Trustee Hudson.
Any ideas to the potential number of jobs we're talking about?
I think at, at this point, and, and Mr. Faber might be able to, to discuss that a little bit further, I, I would say that it'd be pretty speculative at, at this point. Um, there's a wide range of, of different types of industries that, that could be involved in these three buildings. Um, what we've seen in, in development out in the area ranges from, uh, two or three dozen employees in the seven-hundred-thousand-square-foot Briggs Building to, uh, I believe it's over a hundred and fifty, uh, employees in the, in the dielectric building right next door. So I think it could be anywhere in that range. I, I guess times three for three buildings.
Do we know what the development model is? Is it, uh, build and lease, or is it build and sell?
I, I believe that, uh, Capstone Quadrangle, like, like many of the developers that, that we talk with, is, their preference is, uh, a build and lease, but, uh, but they are open to other models if there are, uh, businesses that would like to purchase the buildings.
Okay, thank you. Board? Trustee Myers.
Where, where are those properties again? South of Holy Hill, please? There's, I know of, of a farm almost across from Briggs and Stratton, otherwise the rest of this open land.
This would be the, uh, the parcel directly across the street from Briggs and Stratton. If you continued Gateway Crossing across Holy Hill Road to the south, um, the access road to this development would be, that would form an intersection, it would be, uh, continuing the road in that direction. Um, you may remember this as the land that's been listed for some time, uh, by MLG, um, and, uh, I believe it's seventy or eighty acres, um, uh, along Holy Hill Road, um, and then abutting the, uh, MMSD property further to the south.
So Brian doesn't own that anymore? Or he's not leasing any, or, uh, proposals?
Um, I, this, as, as long as I've been with the village, this has been land that's been listed with MLG, um, and, uh, I, I don't recall the, the owner's name off the, the top of my head.
He's the same one that we had for, um, the one off Aptham Avenue, I think that's , uh, six, or whatever.
Yeah, 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 MLG is, with the village... Yeah, yeah, MLG is, the village worked with MLG on Tiff Six as well.
Thank you. Have they called something else now?
Yes, and I feel bad. I can never remember their new name, but it is, it is something new, so.
So what we're discussing is, and we can talk about the background of the possibility of what could be built here, but what we're really discussing is the, an agreement with Ayers to analyze the feasibility and alternatives of tax increment or any supportive financing to fund the improvements in this area. So for $6,000, they would come forward with information for us to look over and see what can be sustained or what was, be proposed for possible development in overall value, and then what can, what, if anything, the village could choose to support that in any way, whether it be TIF, and we know some of the feelings of TIF on some members of this board, or an alternative which they would bring as well. So it wouldn't be lead with TIF. It's the, as discussed in the actual agenda, to analyze, first of all, the feasibility, is it possible, and alternatives to use either tax increment financing to fund improvements or something else they would come forward with. So it just wouldn't be lead with TIF. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
Motion to approve Resolution 58-2020.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Trustee Zabel.
My only question is that if it's $46,000 to determine if we want to go ahead and do it...
First phase.
First phase. What happens if we make a decision that doesn't make it feasible to do it? Who covers that money? Is that covered by the village? If you don't trade the TIF, you don't do it, is this money spent to verify that we should do it or not do it?
Yes, that would be our expense, and we would absorb that in the general fund.
The decision to do it or not do it is really up to the board. I think it's to bring information for you to use in regards to if you feel that it's something you'd want to do going forward or not, based on the information brought. So it's bringing you the information and doing the research to help in that decision process, not saying that we feel that it should happen, but it would be supported by, you know, based on their analysis of what the cost of the development is and what the value of the development is, which is always information appreciated, I know from me, in regards to what can Ayers does not only for this village, on other projects they've been involved with, but just their, you know, this is their forte, this is what they do, and I would, you know, I would appreciate their expertise in what they can bring forward as part of that information for my decision process. I'm not locked in one way or another right now because I don't have enough information to talk about it openly.
That's really my question, because I should get that information for $6,000.
Right.
The resolution says up to 15. I would rather just limit it to what's there, and if I have a liability, living my liability to $6,000 versus my liability to possibly, you know, because it's back to that old argument again, now that I spent money, I need to go forward. I don't necessarily agree with that argument, but...
But I think, and I understand your concern, and I understand your caution, but I think it clearly states the phases in compensation on one of the last pages, and then also prorates if we get a little bit further and still decide not to do it in Phase Two or Phase Three. So your liability as far as what your total expense is, is laid out in this proposal, and if we only go into Phase One where that information is brought and the decision is made one way or another based on that initial, that initial phase, then that's it. That's $6,000. If we decide to go into Phase Two and halfway through, where we say, well, you know what, this isn't making sense anymore, then it becomes more of a prorated, based on how far and how much, you know, how much time they spent on that next phase. But you can, you can propose or bring any type of amendment you like.
But I have an agreement, you know, not spending any additional money, but I also have an agreement, the first question they have to ask is what is the what-if question? Would this land develop without us doing it?
What if?
And to me, that's the first question, and I, the fact that we had other developments in that area that put in their own dollar to bring in sewer, water, roads, and other stuff that occurred off of this thing, I mean, that set development that went in off of Groden Dale paid their own water bill, paid their own road bill. So I, would this develop, I mean, my sewer comes up through the south end, it comes in and meets at that point, so the sewer's there already. Because we got an easement from the people and brought the sewer back up, it comes in right at Gateway Crossing, I believe. So the sewer's there, so would this land develop without having additional money? Personally, I don't, I think it would. So I don't know why I would want to spend any more money than to find out what if.
Because I think there's other, there's other opportunity to look at other types of development in that area. There has been openly discussed by this board and also by the 2050 Land Use Plan Committee, the possibility of frontage roads running either along the freeway up towards Pioneer or back down towards Freysted Road. Can some of that be brought into some of this TIF? It could be a question that's at least posed and developed and kind of flushed out a little bit in regards to additional. So I understand your point into it's already there, and maybe those other ones wouldn't have occurred if we went to brought it up to that, that point, but I'm interested in that next step as part of it, as part of future development in that whole area, and also analysis, to me personally, and this is personally, of a decision that still needs to be made with sewer and water over to Richfield. So there's a lot of things that roll into this for me when I look at that decisions up in that area, and that's why for $6,000, I would, I would like to have that information brought forward by somebody who plays in this area every day, all day, so they have that expertise to give us the information so we can make a decision based from it. That, again, is, that's for me, and that's my, my point. Trustee Kaminsky.
Question for Steve. What's the upside about the information we can receive for this, this money that we're going to spend? You mentioned that this could help us out in a sense where it'll help fund the existing, one of the existing two TIFs, correct?
Yes, I think, I think there are a couple of options that we should explore. One is related to tax increment District Seven. I think, you know, because of the, some of the things that have been going on with the economy, development has not occurred as quickly there as was planned, and there could be cash flow issues that we'll need to find some ways to address, and there are, there are multiple ways to accomplish that. This could be one way of doing that. This could provide some assistance in that manner. There are also the possibilities that the village could basically utilize this development and this increment to fund some additional improvements that could be used. I know there has been some discussion about using tax increment district funding to extend sewer and water the rest of the way down Holy Hill from Gateway Crossing to the highway. This additional increment might make that more feasible. It could be that adding additional increment could retire one of the existing tax increment districts more quickly and get that back on the tax base. And it could be that we look at this and determine that there are other methods of accomplishing this without, without amending the boundaries. I, I don't know how likely that is, but I think it's something that Ayers could answer better than I could. So I think that there are some things, some, some ways that this could present some advantages to the village that I would recommend taking a look at.
Well, we know that area is going to continue to develop, and I do think that this is wise to spend this money now to get some greater direction on that. I really don't have any problem with that at all, with the amount of money we're going to spend. This is, this is the future growth of our village, and this will allow us to get some options and potentially help us and to do it right, so I have no problem with it.
Trustee Wing.
Well, we were talking about this study, looking at TIF and alternatives to TIF. Well, I'll be surprised if there's any alternatives to TIF. In fact, I'm making the prediction, there'll be alternative TIFs that they present because these consultants are TIF promoting machines, but there won't be alternatives to TIF. And I'll also make the prediction to all of you right now that this study will come and this study will be used to promote bringing water and sewer to Richfield. It's almost a guarantee.
All right. Now, that is, you can, yeah, that's a prediction, but it's not its purpose. Its purpose is for the gentleman that's sitting in the audience and his request, based on his development. Further discussion? Trustee Zabel.
I'd make a motion to modify this because it seems to be that it'd be TIF Eight and possibly TIF Seven. If we're going to, whereas Ayers has proposed to attach a feasibility analysis for TIF Eight or TIF Seven, and I think, and therefore, that should be TIF Eight or TIF Seven, deciding that you'd use it one or the other, at least if I'm hearing Steve correct.
You're looking to lock this feasibility study into the analysis of two TIFs and how to support those, rather than look at other alternatives of financing?
I'm just reading what it says. Right now, you're locking it into Eight.
If I could, I, I think that would be actually a positive change, just to make it more clear that it is not specifically, or only Eight that we're reviewing. In fact, you could just remove the number Eight and just say for tax increment district financing.
Are you making a amendment? Trustee Zabel.
That's what my intent was, but I, hearing Steve's last remark, I could rather do that, just remove TIF Eight.
So your amendment is to remove the language that designates TIF Eight?
Right.
Where are we there? Can somebody direct me to a page so I can...
101.
Yeah, 101, the resolution.
Any place that they have District Eight, tax incremental District Eight, or TIF Eight, or TIF Eight, there's three times. All three should be removed from there.
Okay. Will you have a motion to amend it? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Back to the motion as amended. Further discussion? Trustee Zabel, you still on the floor?
I made another amendment that this should not exceed the $6,000 as part of Phase One.
State that again, please.
Right now, it says the middle and the amount not to exceed $15,500. I would make it not to exceed $6,000, which is Phase One of the development.
That is your motion to amend?
That's my motion to amend.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? One more time. Motion made to amend. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. You want to bring it forward after initial analysis for Phase Two or Phase Three?
Correct.
Do you think that'll change the rate in any way, Steve?
I just want to make sure that I have, I don't want anybody to go beyond what the original Phase One is.
I would think they would need our approval.
Mm-hmm. I mean...
By what phase is, we're not going to stop after Phase One?
Well, my assumption, if it doesn't move feasible to Phase One, I want to know about it.
I would say I don't believe that this would affect, that this change would affect the overall cost of the proposal. I, and I don't object to coming back to the board for approval for the other phases. I do say, when I bring a contract forward, I like to put the entire cost in so that it's clear that the total cost for the contract is $15,500. I don't think it would interfere with what we're trying to accomplish if you would, if you would prefer to make this $6,000 for Phase One. I would also say that just as a matter of practice, I would not go forward with Phase Two or Phase Three without, without village board approval if you adopt it as it's presented. I think either way, I can work with that.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Trustee Myers.
As you just said, Steve, it's going to come back to us for approval to see if we want to go forward in the first place. I don't, I don't see this.
It's just an assurance, just like we just did in public safety, Myers. We said you can only have two dogs and two cats when the law already says that, but we put an extra assurance in. You voted for that. It's just an assurance.
Further discussion? No further discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, raise your hands. Three opposed. Back to the motion as amended. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, since it is paying dollars, I would need a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Nay.
Trustee Zabel?
Nay.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion passes. It takes care of all items on tonight's agenda under New Business and all items on tonight's agenda. Before we adjourn, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, October 19th at 7:00 PM here at the Village Hall Boardroom, and also be in access via WebEx. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching, and have a good night. We are adjourned. Turn off your microphone.